All set? All right, the Stanford pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to the county board meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. And we'll start with the agenda. Any changes?
We do have to add environmental services, and I'll plug them in right after the highway department. Eric's got an update for us.
I'll make a motion to approve the modified agenda.
Well, second.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. And public input. Anybody from the public would like to speak? Okay, if not, we'll close public input. And then move on to consent agenda. Any items anyone wants to see polled or talked about? No? And do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved. Can I second?
I can second.
Okay, any more discussion? Last chance. Okay, all in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, that passes. Employee recognition. Got a number of them here. And the information technology. Fred Steiner, that's you? Okay, and. Started in May 1st.
Yep.
All right, welcome aboard. Yeah, glad to have you.
Thank you.
And then natural resource land management. Mark Lomar, Land Commissioner, recognized for service from December 20th, 2010, to May 5, 2023. I believe we have a certificate for you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then. We have Roger Hansel, Park Maintenance Worker, began seasonal position April 24th, 2023. And then in the Sheriff Department, Tim Fowler, Deputy Sheriff, began part-time position on May 1, 2023. And then for Social Services, Beth Alt-Edder, Social Service, or Social Worker Lead Children's Services, began full-time position April 24th of this year. Michelle Witt, Eligibility Worker, is recognized for service from September 29, 2004, to May 2nd, 2023. And then in solid waste, we have Randy Massey, Certified Attendant, recognized for service from, well, way back then, May 16th, 1988, to May 6th, 2023. We do have a certificate for him, and if you want, we'll get that to him. And then Jameis Paulson, Certified Attendant, began full-time position on April 24th, 2023. Congratulations to all of them. All right, move on. Highway Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Few things for you this morning. First on the agenda. We've got review and approve final payment for project SAP 029-600-013. This is our State Park Road Account on Inland Drive for Arago Township. And this is a good one to get off the books. This is back, 2018 was the construction on this job. And we've been waiting and waiting and working with the contractor, with the consultant, trying to just kind of get some discrepancies ironed out, and finally did receive the signed final back from the contractors, so everything is in order. Be the recommendation for final payment of $52,539.89 to be made.
I will move to approve, and also I'd like to thank the Highway Department, because they did the engineering and helped us secure this, the monies to do this road. So thank you, Jed.
That's my second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, that passes.
And review and approve quote for project CP 29-23-01. This is our annual payment marking contract. Each year, we come and do this with, we're kind of on a, on a schedule with the, with the different roadways, depending upon, you know, the condition they're in, or the amount of traffic that they have on them. But we do take a look at them each year and say, you know, this one needs it, or this one doesn't. And so then we put, we send these quote requests out to contractors. We're down to about one contractor that's bidding our work, so that's the only quote that we received this year. Sir lines a lot out of Edina, Minnesota, $70,970.72, which is still under our budgeted amount. But yeah, kind of interesting. We used to have about three, four that would bid it.
What's changed?
Well, this contractor has bought out at least one, if not two of the other companies, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So just big, big guys taking over, maybe? But yeah, I don't know. Kind of interesting. We do see, on our regular projects, we do still see a couple different contractors. This might be maybe a little large for some of them to take on, but it's, it's a large project. So, yeah, we would, we would still recommend approval of the sole quote.
Do you have any townships that jump on with this bid at all?
We don't. You know, we've put that offer out to them. This is far more economical than what they can do on, on such a small scale. But no, we don't get a lot of feedback on that. We have, we have had them, yeah. But not a, not a consistent deal, no.
So I'm going to divert for just a minute, because I know some of the townships have had trouble finding people just to do their work.
Absolutely.
What's happened with that? Do you know?
Well, I, I think that's the same case, is that these contractors are extremely busy. And so they'll go out and they'll try and get somebody to come in, but they're, they're going to want to do it when the timeframe works out for them. And then when you do on such a small quantity, the price is, is extremely high. And so when they see that, it's a little bit of sticker shock, and, and they would rather not. But I mean, you know, they should have at least the center line of their roadways marked. So if they're running into areas where there's nothing, yeah, they need to get ahold of us, jump on our contract, or they just kind of bite the bullet.
And you said that this was below budget, so you still think it's reasonable?
Yeah, yep, it's, it's a good price. The, the price of paint is up. In some cases, we're seeing about 50% over what we've seen in the past, but yeah, we're still, still under budget, and it's still a good deal. I, I don't have it with me. What are we at, like eight, nine cents a foot? Eight?
That's correct, yeah. We're about $10,000 below original budget.
We've seen as cheap as probably five cents a, a lineal foot. So yeah, being up around eight, it's, it's up.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah? Do we have a second?
Dave.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes.
And just, I guess, a note of information, something that we'll talk about next week at the work session, I believe we're still on there, is that correct? We'll talk about some federal funding, and how we're, we're trying to utilize some of that federal funding for stuff like this, because it is safety-related. And we're going to six-inch wide striping. In some areas, we've got wet reflective. But anyway, I'll, I'll kind of talk about that next week, and hopefully we can keep these costs down of stuff that we're seeing on an annual basis, but use the federal money if we can, so. Okay, then my, my last item, we've got discussion regarding the purchase of a snowblower from the city of Parker Rapids. Kind of an interesting deal. There's been discussions between our department and the city for quite some time with the snowblower that they use. It's an older unit, it's in 1995. It's a Wildcat model. It's extremely heavy-duty. In our opinion, anyway, maybe it's a little more than what the city needs. And the one that we're using currently that we bought from, from Midwest Machinery is not quite as heavy-duty as we probably need. By the time we get to the points where we're blowing snow off the sides of the road, there's a lot of dirt, gravel, and stuff mixed in. It's really tough on them, and we're having to rebuild chutes and line them with a, you know, type of plastic and whatnot. And so through the discussions, this, this possibility came to be. And so, you know, we don't like to bring these things to you, but it wasn't a budgeted item. We just wonder if it's too good of an opportunity. I know that the city had recently put quite a bit of money into maintaining this machine. And so with Herb's discussions with the city, as soon as it became available, we just wanted to get a price from them and see if, if it made sense. $10,301, we think is a, is a good deal for this. These units sell for upwards of $180,000, $190,000 for the unit, when they're new. But this is obviously an older unit, so.
Is there a lot of life left in it?
We think it is, with their recent maintenance, yeah. Yeah, it would, it would mount to our loader. Shouldn't be a problem on that, and it's pretty heavy-duty. We think it's all, all worth $10,301 for sure, yeah.
Can you shift some money around to make it work?
Yeah, this would come out of equipment reserves. We've got a, a healthy balance there. And yeah, it's not a lot of money. If we, like I say, we went out and bought this, you're, you're talking significant amounts. And I don't remember what we paid for our latest snowblower, but we'll definitely be going more heavy-duty on the next repurchase of a new one. So if we can get some good years out of this one at this price, we would, we'd definitely like to purchase it from them.
That was going to be my question. So we'll have a couple of snow throwers or blowers?
Yep.
And so you'll have a number of years of use before we need a new one?
That'd be the hope, yep.
Okay, mm-hmm, thank you. I'll move to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
Good. Do you want to update on any project stuff you got?
Yeah, we got.
Remaining work from last year on County Road 119, County Road 82, and then a couple of township roads, 170 Fourth Avenue and Albert Avenue in Todd Township. That work is scheduled to begin the middle of May, around the 15th. They'll, Knife River Materials is the prime contractor, so they'll tentatively begin their milling and pavement reclamation work that week of the 15th. And they anticipate that they'll be done with paving and shouldering on all four of those routes by, probably about the 9th of June, that last full week of June, so we should see all that completed.
We have, just about have federal approval for our bridge on 13, so that one will be advertised here shortly to get that one in the works. Just waiting on a permit or two, and that one should be ready to go. The work over in Nevis, that's going to be after Labor Day.
Yep, that is, kind of, the contract starting date is the 12th of September. And then we've got a project on our County Road 49 with a completion date of July 28th, which we expect to get going, and we have to work around MinnDOT's detours for Truck Highway 34 and Ainsley, so we're expecting that to start the end of June and wrap up by the end of July. And our annual graveling, annual, of course, the pavement marking, and our calcium chloride applications are all contract completion dates of July 3rd and June 30th for the graveling, so. We've got our Casaw 9 project that should get going from the West County line to Beside County Road 3 in mid-July, around the 17th, and that should be completed. Well, that's 30 working days after that starts. And then, uh, yeah, we've got these LRIP projects. There's a couple of them that are going, of course, obviously, Fair Avenue in the city here, and then Arago Township's 141st. And 230th is supposed to get started later this week, and maybe you have traffic control up already with Leighton Construction as the contractor for that. And then Northern Paving is doing another LRIP job for Henryetta Township, that's 204th. And that's right off of County Road 1, and it connects up to County Road 4, just kind of parallels the Heartland Trail. So that's Grading Basin, Batum, and this, and that's scheduled to get started the 12th of June, mid-June, and with a completion of approximately June 30th, so. We'll see all those all fall into fruition, and then, of course, then our other work to let, out to bid yet as well, so.
I had someone from SWCD ask me about how to get into the Fair, you know, the extension building over there. Is, there's a way to get in there with the construction?
I would, I would sure hope so. I guess I haven't even been through there yet. I know that they, they stopped the traffic coming off of 34 that direction, but.
I told him I wasn't sure. I just wanted to ask you, Jed, you'd probably know.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's easier to turn a block earlier and then just, then you just got to skip across.
Yeah, should, should come straight across there on that first street, yeah.
So they can still get in there then?
Yeah, they're gonna, it'll be open to traffic, you know, to local traffic. I shouldn't say that it's open to through traffic, but it's open to local traffic most of the time, unless they're working on like a, a deep structure or something right there. At the time, you'd experience some delays, but they'll get you through anyway. And if there's a business there, I'm sure they're doing a, a good job. I know with like Forest and Floral, they've got signs up that direct them in from, I think they're turning on Western, coming from the west, down, down around that way through, by the softball fields and stuff.
And another question I have, I had on a different road was, and it's, it's not on your district, Dixon, it's State Highway 87. I was telling him, probably 2024 when it's going to be redone?
Yep, 2024 is going to be the section from Hubbard over to our Casaw 13.
Okay.
And in 2025, they'll do the two ends of it. So yeah, it'll be a couple of years that it'll be tore up there.
So I get it right, okay.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Should be a nice improvement.
Yeah, hopefully it needs it.
MinnDOT does have a couple of pavement resurfacing projects scheduled for this summer, I believe, from Lake George to Cabacona on 71, resurfacing, and then on Truck Highway 200 from, from Cabacona to the intersection of Truck Highway 64. Those, I believe, are scheduled for late July is when I read.
When, when's 34 do again west?
That's, that's. From here to Osage. Yeah, I, I was surprised that it wasn't under the, the current job, but.
Are they done with tree removal too yet?
I just put on whole.
Well, they've done, they've done their right-of-way. Their, their 65-foot rights-of-way. And then the extended clearing on the south side of the road is, I think, later this fall or winter.
I believe they have a public informational meeting coming up, 12th of May, I believe.
Because the, the group asking to save the trees asked for proof that it would actually make any difference.
Yeah.
It was in the paper a while back.
Yeah, I drilled that just the other day, and it's, road's getting tough.
Yes, very tough shape. Yeah, but that'll be, yeah, from Osage out to, what do they call it, the Four Corners or something? The crazy turn, yeah. That'll be done this year.
Thank you for your updates.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
That's going to be an ugly D turn.
Okay, we're slipping Environmental Services in here, next.
Morning.
Hey, Eric. It's been a long time since you've been here.
Yeah, it's all quiet on the western front, I guess is a good way to put it. So the item I have for the board this morning is kind of a policy to matter relative to septic system sizing as it relates to short-term rental licensing. And so if the board remembers with licensing, we decided that we would base the maximum allowed occupancy in a short-term rental on the size of the septic system. And so it recently came to ours and other counties' attention. The state made it an update that with SB2 gravelless pipe, which is essentially eight-inch or 12-inch plastic perforated pipe with a geotextile sock around it, that was a product that was used quite a bit in the 90s and of the early 2000s for grain fields, that they wanted that sizing to be changed from how it was when this product was installed. So they initially allowed, say with a 12-inch pipe, which was typically what we saw going around here, they would allow three feet of, three square feet of treatment area for one linear foot of that pipe. When they changed the rules back in '08, they started requiring those types of drainfield products to become what they called registered, and this manufacturer never registered that product. So technically, from that point forward, it hasn't been able to be installed, but we still have a lot of those systems out there that have this as a drainfield type. So the question relative to short-term rentals is, when we evaluate sizing to determine how much their occupancy can be, should we honor the existing, essentially, one to three ratio of one linear foot to three square feet of treatment area? Or would the board rather that we apply the, the new position from the PCA, which is one linear foot equals one square foot of treatment area on these 12-inch pipe SB2 systems? Since the septic sizing was kind of the one thing that the board emphasized with the short-term rentals, I felt it appropriate to run the matter by you before we decided a direction to go. We vetted this with the General Government Committee recently, and the committee's thoughts were to honor the existing sizing, and then if and when they needed to expand or wanted to, then we would apply the, the new current sizing criteria to that expansion design. But that's, I can go into more detail if the board has questions, but that essentially is the question of what sizing do we want to honor or use for these existing systems? And we kind of ran into it, as well with some of the, what you see on the screen is a chambered system. That's another product. That one still is registered. But they put a lot of that in back in the day under what they called warranty sizing, which would allow up to a 40% reduction in the drainfield area when using that type of product. We don't do that anymore, because there were issues with the systems hydraulically being compromised, and then the manufacturer wasn't the best at honoring the warranty that they had provided. So we run into it with this type of system as well, that we've got some of those that went in under that warranty sizing, and there, the question would be the same of, do we want to honor that if they aren't changing the system, or would the board rather that we use current full sizing criteria with those as well?
My thoughts, when I'm on the General Government Committee, was that constantly changing regulations are really difficult for individuals. It puts an undue, unnecessary burden on them. I mean, the important thing is that it passes the, the current inspection. If there's no failing, then why mess with it?
I don't understand septic systems all that great. Question sounds stupid, that's why. But if we would, I actually agree with you, Tom, but if we would require the new systems, wouldn't people hesitate to register possibly, because then they would have to spend the money putting in a new system?
That is a possibility, yes. The other thing is that of the, these types of systems are the ones that we have, of the complaints we've had of failing septic systems when they're put to in short-term rental use. It's been these types of drainfields that we've had those complaints.
So then they have to self-correct at that time, right?
Yes, yeah. So it's, it's, one side of the coin is the neighbor's concerns of, you know, the system potentially being overtaxed. The flip side, as, as been mentioned already this morning, would be, you know, like you said, the rules keep changing, and the, the landowner shouldn't have to always jump whenever the state changes things, but these do have, they are known to, to be more prone to hydraulic overloading, so.
How many STRs do we have registered as of now for this year?
Well, we're just getting into the renewal stage, so we've got a handful that have been coming in. Last year, we had in the high 70s for total numbers of licenses issued, which was close to 100% of what we had, at least for information of STRs as known by the Assessor Department. I'm guessing there's probably a few more, but compared to other counties for the first year of short-term wrestle, short-term rental regulations, we were much, much higher in terms of first-year compliance typically. Others counties, if they saw a third of the known operations get licensed, they were feeling that they were very successful.
And the way our STR ordinance is written, these properties will have to be inspected every three years. Five years if it's a brand-new system, but every three years, and, you know, I think that's going to be very good safety net to catch any system that's going to be failing or close to failing. So why, why change it?
To be clear, this would apply to all properties that would have something like this. We would continue to use the same triggering mechanisms we currently use. If they're not, if somebody complains and they're found not in compliance, they'd have to upgrade and repair. If nobody complains and it seems to be working, then it's fine. Even if you went and pulled a permit then for an expansion, that requires a septic inspection, correct?
Yep.
Would this be non-compliant then at that point?
The compliance inspection criteria don't get into the sizing of the system. They just look at, is it surfacing to the ground? Is it backing up into the structure that services? Is it, is the tank sealed? So sizing isn't a part of compliance criteria. But if somebody came in for a permit to add to a sewered structure, say an additional bedroom beyond what the original system was sized for, that would be the trigger that you mentioned that would require the system to be brought up fully into compliance with current sizing requirements.
Okay.
So it sounds like the consensus would be to honor the existing sizing for short-term rentals with these types of drainfield media.
That's my position.
I agree.
I do too.
Thank you, that's what I needed.
That's it?
Yep, that's it.
All right. Thanks, Eric.
Do you have anything coming up in the future? For like C2Ps or anything like that?
Nothing in the works right now. We've had conversations with a party that was considering a campground on Pickerel Lake, but so far, it's just been kind of preliminary talks. I'm not sure, they might have adjusted their timeline once they found out all that was involved in the process. Nothing in the immediate near future that has been brought to the department's attention at this point.
You talked a little bit in general government about your, your e-permitting process and where you're at with that? Maybe share that one?
Oh, sure. Yeah, so as a refresher, we thankfully were able to identify a permitting vendor, my government online, that's a fellow governmental entity down in Louisiana, and they've been working through the winter. And they've been working through the winter on, uh, getting the system set up for us to have an online permitting interface that, uh, we're now in the process of doing kind of the beta testing, uh, having various meetings with them, starting last week, uh, to review what they've put together and then giving them feedback. So that'll intensify this month. And then, uh, hopefully we don't have a go-live tentative date yet, but we're hoping sometime this construction season that we'll at least be able to get part of that operational. And the nice things will give us a lot of efficiencies, allowing online applications. It'll have an integrated payment system with our credit card that will, uh, greatly streamline that process from what it currently is, which works well now, but it's got a fair amount of manual, uh, steps to it. And then it also has the nice added feature of being mobile device friendly, so it'll allow staff to do a lot of work in the field and inputting of, uh, data, photos, uh, whatnot, uh, in the field as opposed to, currently we collect that in the field and then have to come back to the office and then manually upload that. So, uh, we're very much looking forward to that. And it's finally kind of the point where we're gonna get over the proverbial hill at long last and be able to get rid of a lot of our kind of workaround solutions that we've implemented over the years with, uh, like spreadsheet tracking and whatnot. We'll be able to consolidate that all in one spot. And, um, so far it's, uh, I'm, it's pretty exciting to see it finally having our data on it as opposed to looking at demos of what other, uh, entities have.
And Eric, it seems that there, the variance applications are a little slow for this time of year?
Uh, they're down, but that's, uh, probably a lot due to just the weather and the protracted winter. So, uh, May is, uh, a relatively light agenda as well, but I'm gonna guess June or July we'll see the usual jump in, uh, activity. But fewer variances usually indicates that your, uh, ordinance is, uh, working well. Uh, when you start seeing a lot of variances, then that's, uh, a place where you wanna evaluate those parts of the ordinance where you're constantly seeing variances and ask the question, is there something we can change there to, uh, no, not have that many variances because they kind of end up being, uh, kind of your stereotypical rubber stamps? So the low number right now isn't, isn't really a concern. And if it would stay low, that's a sign of a ordinance that's doing its job.
Okay, thank you Eric.
Thank you.
Okay, Chip, one last time.
Good morning. Light load today, so, uh, my first item is a resolution, um, this is an easement or acknowledgement and of a, of an easement. We brought this back to you, uh, back in December of last year. Um, Minnesota DNR acquired a scientific and natural area in Becker County, but the access to it, the easement, uh, that gets access to that property is in Hubbard County. And they wanted, um, county board to, uh, acknowledge and approve the easement. Um, and the easement is across private property. And so we had some concerns that, you know, the county board doesn't have the authority to ignore, or to approve an easement across private property. So we came up with something and apparently for the, uh, the, the legal beagles in the DNR was not quite good enough for them that we, we acknowledged the, um, the easement was not good enough. They needed the county board to, uh, approve the acquisition of the easement and acknowledge that there's an easement. So, uh, bringing this back again, um, brought it, or sent it through to the DNR and, um, county attorney's office. And they are accepted with the, uh, they'll accept the, the language that you hereby acknowledge and approve the acquisition of this legal easement. So just a hoop to jump through, um, you know, when, when the DNR acquires properties for, uh, scientific and natural areas and, and other things, the county board has to approve tho- those purchases and those acquisitions. So this is just their means of acknowledging and approving the acquisition of the easement to that property, so.
So I think the question we came up with in December is we didn't have the authority to grant that, and we're not granting it. We're just recognizing that they have the ability to acquire it. And I was in on the email chains and saw that go back and through, back and forth. And DNR and Jonathan and everybody said, yep, this, this works for all of us. So it's a very modest and minor change, but it's just identifying those relationships. We don't have the authority to grant that because it's not ours, but we're also not going to not recognize the fact they have the ability to, to, um, acquire that.
Sure, I'll jump through that hoop. I mean, uh, I'll make the motion to, to accept and acknowledge the easement.
I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it passes.
And then bringing back a, an item from, uh, our last meeting, uh, regarding a, uh, vendor's permit for the Trinity Lutheran Church in Lake George to, uh, sell hot dogs in, uh, Lake George Community Park. After reviewing that and talking with Jonathan, I did, uh, attach his, his, uh, response regarding the county board's ability to waive the, uh, vendor policy. Uh, can't do that without violating the Maccadam, Mandamus rules, or however you pronounce that. Um, so, uh, brought it back to the, the park board and they're recommending that, um, that we, um, grant, uh, a vendor's permit to Trinity Lutheran Church and waive any fees, uh, for that. Um, they will be required to have, um, liability insurance, meaning our minimum tort, uh, liability standards, uh, one point five million dollars. They also have to get a license from the Department of Health, um, in order to operate a seasonal, um, or special events food cart. So a couple of jump, hoops that they're gonna have to jump through in order to do this. I've asked, uh, to, to go back to the church and ask them if they're still interested in going through those hoops. Haven't heard back from them yet, but, um, assuming that they are, um, like to at least, uh, approve the vendor's permit and waive any, any vendor's fee for the Trinity Lutheran Church.
Need be contingent upon them having the insurance requirements.
Insurance and the, the license, yeah.
Anyone, any more thoughts, questions, or otherwise someone wanna make a motion to that effect?
Well, we saw the letter from Jonathan.
Yep.
Recommending, so I'll, I'll salute.
With the contingent upon?
Yeah.
Okay.
Meeting the other requirements.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it passes.
And just to let you know, uh, tree planting is gonna start on May tenth. Uh, we have about a hundred and forty thousand trees that we will be planting. Uh, probably will take, uh, two weeks or so to, to get those in the ground, ten days, two weeks. Um, so you will see some, some overtime from, uh, staff, uh, for those few days, uh, getting those trees in the ground, so. That's all I have.
Chip, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do you know, do you have any background on item nine A? The, um, NACO's creation of this, um, National Center for Public Land Counties?
I have nothing on that. I saw that this morning and, and I have no idea what that is, so.
Okay, so NACO is, um, if you just stay in case there is a question, but, um, and I'll just jump ahead if I can. NACO's creating, um, this National Center for Public Lands basically as a national advocacy on behalf of counties with, um, large portions of, of public lands. And what they're asking is they're asking for a thousand dollar contribution from the participating counties, um, for two years. And if they're gonna have the ability to focus on advocacy for us, uh, especially in light of, especially in light of, uh, current issues relating to tax forfeited lands and our ability to manage those, I, I think it makes sense of the recommendations coming from NACO. It was, it passed to us through AMC as one of the counties that have a significant portion, so. We don't know what that advocacy looks like at this point. We know there are, there are big issues and we, I think we believe that if NACO is gonna advocate on our behalf, it would be helpful.
We'll have discussion on it when we get to it.
Okay. Okay.
I should, uh, just, uh, give you a, a brief update, um, on the US Supreme Court case, Tyler versus Hennepin County. That was heard last week. Um, I did listen in on that. The ruling on that will probably not be until later June. But, um, all indications are that it's not gonna be good for counties. Um, so your tax forfeited land rules, uh, are going to probably be changing over the next two years. The Land Commissioners Association is, is, uh, looking at ways that they can be involved in helping shape any legislation as it comes through. Um, you know, the problem is, is that out of the eighty-seven counties in Minnesota, there's only thirteen, fourteen of us that have large land holdings and manage those lands for public use. And being the small piece of the pie, uh, in far, as far as numbers are concerned, we're afraid that, uh, you know, legislators are gonna be listening more to the, you know, sixty, seventy, uh, counties where they don't have much land. And northern Hubbard County or northern Minnesota is, is gonna be getting a small piece of any legislation. So we're trying to figure out how we can help direct that, um, that legislation as it will be coming forward. Because we're assuming that next year there will be several, uh, bills proposing changes to the tax forfeited status or laws.
And those people in the legislature, they probably have this narrow view that, uh, you know, timber harvesting is not a good thing when actually, you know, they use a lot of the products that come out of it.
Well, most of them are not even aware that there are counties that have large land bases, uh, of tax forfeited land. And they see this as a forfeit the land and then you sell the land and that's where the profit comes. It's not, they don't see it as the county holding these lands and managing them for long-term purposes. I just, you know, because metro area, uh, you know, they get it and they try and turn it around as fast as they can. Whereas is, we have, you know, two point eight million acres in northern Hubbard, or northern Minnesota, um, that is managed for long-term use, so.
The court case.
Perspective and it's mostly.
The court case is about, about the tax forfeiture of a residential property.
Right.
Which needs to be distinguished from the management of, of public lands.
Because if it'll, if they apply it, like, we think they might apply it to this residential property, how does that work for tax forfeited land in the county that we may have under care for ten, fifteen, twenty years? And then all of a sudden you sell it? How do you determine the equity in that and the value of, you know, what they didn't pay in taxes? And that could be a mess.
So beware that there, there will probably be several law changes or, or attempts to change status, the statutes la- next year, next couple of years. So, um, you'll have to, uh, keep an eye on those and make sure that northern Minnesota is, is well-represented.
And everybody aware that there's, uh, the retirement reception for you on Friday?
All right.
Well, it's this Friday?
This Friday, yeah, it's, he's short, I'm really sure.
Yeah, this is my last meeting, so.
Well, thank you Chip.
Thank you.
You can always go for public comment.
Okay, Josh.
Good morning.
Morning.
So the one item I have this morning is to review and approve quotes for dumpsters, um, at our North Transfer Station. Uh, this would be to, pretty much we're replacing our burnable, our dumpsters at the North Station where we put our garbage into. Uh, we're gonna be putting our burnable garbage into our auger compactor that we had installed last fall up there. And these bins will be a little bit more, uh, friendly to the public, uh, lower side, so they can eat, more easily get garbage in and we can inspect them before we're putting them through, um, the auger compactor, so. I did have a, uh, in my budget to replace containers this year, so that would be, uh, part of that. And, uh, we received two quotes, uh, looking at purchasing eight dumpsters, uh, with the low quote being Metalworks out of Brainerd, Minnesota for eleven thousand six hundred dollars. Um, and that'll be my recommendation. Is there any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second, the number one quote.
David, did you second? Okay, any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it passes. Thank you.
That's all I had unless anyone has anything for me, so.
So I see you made the change on the batteries.
Yep.
That's good.
Yep, changing our messaging, so we want all batteries to come into household hazardous waste, so we can sort them from there, so.
Seen a lot more in the news about PFAS.
Yep, it's, I mean, there's legend, there's, you know, stuff com- coming down now from the EPA. Um, so it's continuing to be a, um, major issue. Um, we are doing, going forward with our, you know, our sampling, um, and we're actually, uh, doing our spring sampling tomorrow, so we'll be starting that process too, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, on to administrator.
So I really don't have much to say about this first item, other than what I've already said. Relative to the issue that, um, Chip mentioned, it seems like, um, it seems like having an advocate at NACO would be, would be worthwhile. Um, I have not seen them actually tie this advocacy to that issue.
I looked up this Western Interstate, what was that again? What did it stand for? And it was W I R, and it had to do primarily with federal lands out west. And, uh, I was just wondering, how much federal land do we have in our county?
Um, we don't.
You don't have any?
We don't, and you're right, most of the federal lands are out west. Um, but, but the, the appropriations relative to payment in lieu and secure rural schools are, um, well, I shouldn't say that. Cook County, Minnesota, the Boundary Waters is all federal lands. Um, so the three counties up there have a significant portion and get a lot of federal dollars from Pilt and, and, um, secure rural schools funding. Hubbard County does not have any significant amount, our, our lens, our state and county.
I also looked up the National Center for Public Lands County, and this is the definition of public lands county is federal lands. That's why I was wondering how is that relevant to us? Throw out a thousand dollars for something that doesn't even affect us.
Mm-hmm.
And the other thing that I was kind of questioning was, um, is that this would give, uh, enhanced opportunity, this is reading from the, from the letter, enhanced opportunity to demonstrate how prosperous public land, Lance County create a prosperous America. You know, my idea of a prosperous American comes from private enterprise, not from, you know, how land, how your public land is managed. But anyways, those are my thoughts on it.
So I was wondering, the little I know about land management in California from what I've read is, you know, they wanted everything just to be left, which has resulted in fires.
Yep.
So I'm wondering if, if part of that, I read through that, if, part of that is educating that there's different ways? Because we manage our lands in such a way that forest fires isn't much of an issue? But, but when you go from AMC to NACO, then you get, I'm not sure how down to. But, but when you go from AMC to Naco, then you get, I'm not sure how down to county by county they will get.
It sounds like they wanna use that, you know, total of fifteen million over a couple of years to hire a couple of
Yes.
People, ride out, you know, probably ride out of college, young guys, and I mean, and we own people. And they're going to write up what probably could end up becoming management plans.
So then should we be involved?
Should be involved in that. That's what I'm wondering. I'm, I question this.
A different, a different viewpoint, possibly.
And that's where I was thinking where it's a thousand dollars over two years, so basically five hundred dollars a year? Or even if it's a thousand dollars a year, but if it's a two-year deal, say after two years, we decide, no, this wasn't good. Do we back out then? Or, cause I'm, I'm assuming it'll be an ongoing ask?
So then would Naco then want the counties involved for input?
So your concern, if I get it right, is you're, you're a little nervous on whether their position would align with ours?
Right. I mean, it's not much money, but it's the principle of it. Their, their position might end up being totally opposite of what we would, would want. And matter of fact, it, it sounded like, almost like it would promote more acquisition of land. I mean, there, promotes, prosperous public lands, counties create prosperous America. That sounds like they're promoting more public land.
Sounds like they wanna put something out there that, that markets the value of public land
Right.
to the public.
And that's in principle, even though it's not much money, in principle, I'd be against that.
But if we had an actual voice at the table, instead of just handing over our money and allowing Naco just to represent us? To me, there's a difference, because we could come in and say, you know, this is how we're managing and we don't believe that necessarily that the concept should be more and more public land. But if we just send our money and then Naco just does all the representation, that's entirely different.
From, from a broad perspective, I think we're, we're somewhat aligned broadly. I mean, obviously we value public land here, otherwise we wouldn't have any, we'd sell it all. But we obviously do, and there is a value to the public in having it. But when you get down to forest management and how we manage our public lands, then I think I can see where there would be possibly, based on your comment too, as an example, California, or even down Treefall and the Boundary Waters, and what's the best solution there? There may be some stark differences between what we think and what they would recommend.
It says in this letter, it's hiring just a couple people to write this thing up. And oh, we got, hmm, that's not, it's just the principle of it.
But if we had a voice directly at that table, we could be influential. But if we're just giving our money and then no voice?
Right. And right now, it's no voice.
Yep.
There's no hurry on this, is there?
So the last paragraph is for me to report back to Ryan at Erdman at AMC to talk about the county's likelihood and the, and the obvious thing I can communicate to him is the questions that the board has. And see if he can clear that up, if he has any further information for us. If he has any information for us, I can bring it forward again. Otherwise, what I was asked to do was give it to you for your consideration, so.
I'd like to see it as an agenda item at the District Two meeting.
Yeah, that would be a good place for discussion.
And Ryan could come back to us and, and we could feel free to reach out to Mary Jo and
Yep.
give her, her perspective too.
And, and where is the rest of the fifteen million coming from? Obviously, the thousand dollars, the counties aren't gonna be contributing a lot. Or was it the counties across the United States that were asking?
Counties across the United States.
What amount to fifteen million?
Yeah, one county in, in California, which has a lot of federal land, they contributed, I think it was a hundred and twenty thousand to this. So it's, it's based on, you know, how much land you got.
Interesting discussion at District Two. Ryan brought it up, and then that, then that discussion can get back to Mary Jo.
You'd have similar counties like us with a lot of public land and get their input too.
It just raised a red flag to me, that's all. You know, it's not much money, it's just, mm-hmm, principle of it.
And then there's that question, if we don't contribute, do we have a voice?
But even if we do contribute, do we have a voice?
Yeah, there's that too.
Cause we have a lot to contribute. We have years and years worth of, of successful management of public lands that allows the public to use them, plus income to the county.
Yeah. So, yeah, I would just reach out to Ryan and say we'd like to know more, have a discussion at District Two and then in the meantime, we can bring this back up in June? A- after the District Two meeting, maybe?
Yeah, cause we'll, we'll meet again after the District Two meeting.
I will send Ryan a email and suggest it be added to the District Two agenda. Anything else? Other items I would have would be that, at the May work session, Jed talked about bringing forward some project ideas for a federal source of funding. So he'll be there and then we will have Bruce Schwartzman from BKV here. Met with him yesterday electronically with the sheriff and chief deputy and, and jail administrator and reviewed the scope of that project that we were proposing to put on the five-year plan. And, and talked about, you know, why is it necessary, why is it necessary now? What, what are the operational issues, what are the challenges? What are the new requirements, you know, that weren't in place twenty years ago when that building was built? So the intention is that about nine-thirty, we would start with Bruce Schwartzman. He'd give a brief presentation of that project, answer whatever questions that you have, and then we would have the opportunity to go over and take a tour of those facilities. So you could see firsthand what it looks like. And then have a much better feeling about moving forward with the capital improvement plan and determining if that's on the five-year plan or not on the five-year plan as we present it. So that's, that's the agenda for, for May. In June, we're gonna have our tour of the Historical Society Museum.
You may have Lisa reaching out to you from Extension Services too, to get on a work session agenda pretty soon.
Okay. We have room in May. I don't think Jed's idea is gonna take more than about fifteen minutes worth of conversation.
And it may be the May work session she might
Yep.
use, but it, it's nothing expensive.
I told Bruce we could start at nine-thirty, we could start at ten o'clock. He said he could be here by nine-thirty from the cities. So that, we get some flexibility in that. Otherwise, that is all I have unless anyone has questions. I know there are a lot of questions. There's a lot, a lot of stuff happening in the background right now.
We'll cover some of it in the committee report.
Committee reports? Well, you wanna, like to start?
I can start. You'll take care of Extension?
Sure.
Okay. Heritage, RFP has been worked on and Jeff will have that start to go out. It's been
The advertisement, the advertisement will be in the paper Wednesday, Saturday, Wednesday, Saturday. And then we will send that to the people on the list we've identified as people who might be interested in receiving that. So that'll all happen this week.
Otherwise, kinda report from the March meeting. The CMS overall star is up to four. Health inspection's at a three. Again, this is a one-to-five scale. Quality measures, five. Staffing was a four. Minnesota nursing home report curve was a three. We had four hires and four, four terminations. One was a retirement. So we just status quo there. We still have seven open FTEs. The agency contract was down to one, but I believe in the last two weeks, we're down to zero. So hopefully next month, that'll be, the report will be a zero. Applicants, we had twenty applicants. Our retention rate is sixty-four percent and our turnover is sixty-four percent. Financials, Heritage Manor will be up to sixteen residents come June, out of twenty-six. The cottages are at seventeen. Heritage Living Center is at thirty-five point two right now. EBITDA, Heritage Manor was negative twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and five. The cottages was positive twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-one. Heritage Living Center was positive one hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and sixteen. So the total combined EBITDA was positive one hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two for the month of March. So positive cash flow for the second month in a row. Again, that's a great trend. We need about a million to one-point-two to meet, cash flow, to meet all the, the debt depreciation and interest requirements. But it's positive, right? We haven't been positive in a long time, so we're, we're gaining ground rapidly here, it appears, so. So that's great. Other than that, we just worked on the, the RFP and Stephanie continues to work on efficiencies and trying to improve things. We got the VA grant was approved, so there's some possibilities there. The goal is to try and get the residency and, and the nursing home back up above forty, forty-two to forty-five. It's kinda that magic number where, where that EBITDA will climb rapidly. So we'll continue to work on that. Then I had, I attended a childcare.
Oh, before you go on, I'm just gonna insert one thing.
Yep.
So Brad from Acumen sent out an email just informing us that for all the places that they have discontinued contracts, they are open to the executive directors. They're supportive if the executive director chooses to stay on. So.
Yep. So a lot'll be changing with, you know, with the RFP and if anything comes from the brokerage. Everything's going to be pretty dynamic here for the month of May. Hopefully, we'll get some closure to some things in June.
Yeah, there's some recent, more good feedback about Stephanie.
Yeah, she's doing a great job.
Yeah. I've, I've received a little bit of feedback from, from workers and the public. It's been positive. And I think Shire's had some too, so. Trending in the right direction, for sure. I attended the second childcare forum thing, cause I, I couldn't attend the first one, so. I went to the second one and it was a nice discussion, summarizing kinda what happened at the first one. There was a good panel, panel there. And everybody was kind of in agreement on, you know, what the problems are and, and what they hoped to have happen to resolve it. But in the end, when you try to look at a model that makes sense, one thing did stick out to me at that meeting that I hadn't heard before, and that's Lund Boats down in New York Mills has worked with the city or the county, I don't know which one. And they came up with a model where they, they remodeled, remodeled or built two duplexes. And then they used a duplex for daycare. And Lund Boats was a big partner with them, reserving space at those daycare facilities for their employees. One of the first things that came up in the forum was, well, why doesn't the county just build a daycare center? Well, of course, you can do that, but if the business model is broken, you're gonna end up with this single-purpose building and potentially the county ends up with this building. What do you do with it? So this is a first model where I, I think, okay, now, worst-case scenario, if the business model continues to be broken, you're not out. You still have two livable housing facilities that you could do something with. So in the end, we'll, we worked with, mentioned to all the panelists up there, including the Northwest Minnesota Initiative Foundation, to reach out to Mary at HLDC. And then the finance group that had given us a grant through HLDC for, for support of daycare facilities. They have a study out that gives all the details and the data needed to know what's going on in Hubbard County in that area and where the needs are. To pass that information on to Mary and start having a discussion and see if this model might work here somehow with some partnerships with some different people, so. I think that's kind of exciting. At least we got some direction and maybe something will come out of it. There's gonna be, it appears, a ton of grant money available from state government if some of these bills pass. So building it is the easier part. Making it, the business model work in it is the more complicated part. But maybe potentially with some grant money to build something and some government and private support, we can get somebody to come in and operate one, or two, or three. Have to see what the data says, but anyhow, HLDC will be exploring that, so. The other thing that's come up since the last meeting, the Heartland Lakes Development Commission had a contract to, for Mary to manage HRA. We have since canceled that contract, gave them notice that, that contract being canceled. Mary just has too much work to do. It's, it's become difficult to balance between two different boards. And she needs to focus on the HLDC stuff that we have going. And so we, we attended a meeting last night with HRA just to answer questions for them and help them transition back to finding, either through contract or, or whatever, however they might services to cover their needs, so. So that's in play right now, too. Let's see. And the other thing I wanted to share kinda, as part, I've been sharing this a little bit with folks, but recently, in the, not only in the paper, but in conversations I've had with different people there, there's been some conversation advancing the notion that, that Hubbard County does not support economic development outside of the Park Rapids area very much. Some of you may have heard that, some of that, but, so I did a little homework on it and I just wanted to put it into context, you know, what Hubbard County does. Hubbard County supports economic activity throughout the whole county when the projects are financially feasible, make economic sense and have the necessary supportive infrastructure or partners in place and are willing to participate. As examples, Hubbard County Parks and Rec, Deep Lake Park in Clay Township is a seven-million-dollar proposed project that over the next ten years, again, that's in Clay Township. The Laporte Trailhead Project, the county awarded thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and ten cents in two thousand and fourteen to that project. Nevis Muskie Park, the county donated twenty-five thousand dollars to that project in two thousand and nineteen. Hartland Park Trailhead Project, we expended twenty-four thousand, two hundred and forty dollars on that. That was just completed in twenty-one. And recently, we did a grant match for Akeley Trailhead Project at sixty-five thousand dollars. And of course, there's Hartland Park in Park Rapids, which is county-owned and maintained. The Highway Department supports engineering services for local road improvement program grants, as we heard today. It's just one example. There's, there's a ton of that that's done and the value of those engineering services can't, can't be easily counted. It's a lot of, lot of time and a lot of money. The only time the engineering department really charges anything is when there's administrative work to be done. So the county's, county works with townships and cities on that a ton. And they support local townships and cities to piggyback on county bids. And many of us who have been township supervisors, we know the value of that. It saves the townships a lot of money. Recent examples include engineering support for the street upgrade in the city of Akeley and here in Park Rapids. Heartland Lakes Development Commission administered CARES Act grants to Hubbard County small businesses in all areas. Ninety-eight different businesses. One-point-eight million dollars with the funding. One and a half million of it was from Hubbard County. The rest came from townships and cities throughout the county that collaborated with Heartland Lakes to administer those grants. Additional state COVID funding of six-hundred thousand dollars in grants to small businesses. Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in deed grants to Main Street business and, businesses in Park Rapids. Was that about a year, eighteen months ago that took place? And every bit of that went out to, to small businesses on Main Street, Park Rapids. It was so successful, matter of fact, that deed reached out to Heartland Lakes Development Commission and asked if they'd want another round. And we said we would, but we'd like to use it outside the city of Park Rapids. And so Mary successfully lobbied them to allow us to use it in the cities of Nevis, Akeley, Laporte, Guthrie, any city inside the county. But she also was able to add Dorset and Lake George. And as of right now, a lot of that fund, those funds are still available, so any businesses in those areas are eligible for some small business grants to help with improvements on their business. Again, that grant is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Three-hundred thousand dollars reached recently in housing trust seed money to build the new fifty-eight unit apartment that we're working on to build and to create a trust fund that can be used for other projects throughout the county as it grows. Sponsored the Career Fair in support of business throughout the county. Most of the businesses there were from outside of the city of Park Rapids. The Hangar supports workers and businesses throughout the county. And recently, we awarded three, thirty thousand-plus dollars in childcare support grants. Hubbard County, our Housing Redevelopment Authority in Hubbard County, they built the two, two apartments, Metal Brook and that, in the last four years. two, two apartments, Metal Brook and that, in the last four years. County levies for the HRA, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, and the HRA has authority to do other projects for housing in the county. Headwaters Regional Development Commission, the county levy is approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for HRDC. HRDC is authorized to expand housing redevelopment funds in Hubbard County. And just kind of to put it in perspective, too, or in context, you know, we had the ARPA funding and we had a lot of discussions on the ARPA fundings and we had kind of tacit consensus on kind of where we proportionally send that, spend that. And we had, uh, we had consensus to spend a significant part of that on owner occupied rehab and some other projects throughout the county. But again, COVID kind of messed all that up and all those funds ended up being diverted to Heritage to keep Heritage operational. So it's not like the county is not engaged or, um, trying to help fund and provide stopgap funding, things for these projects like this throughout the county. So I just wanted to answer that kind of directly because I think it was a little bit of misinformation on exactly, or just people not informed, unaware of what the county spends its money on. Thank you for for listening.
Thank you, Dave.
That's what I have.
Sorry.
Well, I mean, to start out, I got an update from HIP if you, all of us know that the marijuana bills passed the House and the Senate and now they're, um, going to committee to try to work out the differences. So HIP put out concerns. I think most of us know the Sheriff's Department felt that it wasn't ready to be legalized and the National Institute of Health reported traffic deaths involving marijuana impaired drivers increased one hundred and thirty-eight percent since marijuana was legalized in Colorado. The Governor's Highway Safety Association has noted increases in impaired driving cases and federal crashes in Washington State since become legalized. And so that was one of the reasons that the Sheriff's Department and HIP and other organizations felt the bill wasn't ready to be passed. Um, one of the things, Tom, I'm gonna let you report on MRC, except yesterday they talked about, we don't know if this will be in the final draft of the bill, but, um, that Wallace will sign, but that city's under ten thousand could limit the licensure to one. So we'll see where that goes. Um, as you know, local control was completely left out of the bill. And then the other thing I have is, um, Mahabi last Friday, and so we had, we celebrated with a person that, um, was part of Mahabi's training program and has gone on successfully to finish her schooling and is employed by somebody else now. She gave a speech to over a hundred and fifty people. And so it was just fun to celebrate her success with her. In the month of April, Hubbard County was, um, dropped at, to zero for homelessness. And so that's the first time that that's happened. Um, Mahabi got an additional two point six million dollars, so now they have three point nine million dollars to deal with homelessness in the five counties. Um, we talked about, um, housing in the counties and I brought this up only because personally I've become involved with something. There's a couple that are meth addicts that have been clean for several months and they can't find housing. So I've been working with Mahabi to try get them to find housing in Hubbard County. And I'm finding out it's next to impossible if you have a felon to find housing and I totally get that, except when you don't have housing, the chances of repeating and ending up back in prison is pretty high. So I brought that up at the HRA meeting last night because this particular couple actually has a church that will sponsor them. As far as paying the rent, um, they're walking alongside the couple to ensure that they have the best possible chance of sobriety. So the HRA is interested in exploring what would that look like? If someone with a felon had a sponsor that would guarantee the financial side of it? I don't know where that's gonna go, but this is a, this is a whole new direction for me that I didn't even realize existed out there to that extent. In Hubbard County currently, according to Mahabi, the only place that people can live with a felon, the only landlord that will accept him is the middle school. So I'll keep you posted as we develop this further. That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you, Charlie. Um, let me see, I had a couple, uh, the Parks Board met recently. Um, one of the things we talked about was, uh, possible land exchanges. There's a tract of land that someone owns near Hartland Park and exchange act for something further north that they would like to be able to have that the county owns. And what we would do with that land near, uh, adjacent Hartland Park was put in a dog park, which we've had a number of people express interest in that. So that'll be a possibility coming up. Um, then, probably there's a number of maintenance things, I don't need to talk about those and.
Is that a full lot?
Yeah, a full lot. Yep, yep. And it's right next to the park, so it would be a good location for it.
Yep.
Um, well, there's still interest in this splash pad. Craig Henzel dug into it some more. And, um, it sounds like the MPCA, uh, says that you, if you do have water that runs over a person's body, that it can't be irrigated. It's considered gray water, so that's gonna be a complication right there.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So it almost sounds like the only route to go would be chlorinated water, which means you'd have to have an inspector, so. You know, where that's at, it's gonna probably be a while on that, but it'd still be nice to have a splash pad there. But though those are the, the, the roadblocks we're running into right now with the splash pad. Yeah, I can't believe, yeah, water just runs over you and it's considered gray water.
Guess that's what happens when you jump in the river.
Yeah, I know.
The lake.
Yeah. Anyways, that's what Greg reported on it. I didn't check with MPCA myself, but I'll believe what he said. Okay. Um, well, with MRC, there's a number of things I wrote down. Some of them have already been mentioned. I think, um, with cannabis, uh, it's the House that is, uh, wants no local control. The Senate is open to it, so it's still in debate right now. That's what I wrote down. You get the same thing on that?
Yeah, and and, um, from the report, there was only one on the Democrat's side that didn't support the language in the House.
Okay.
And I don't know where that's at.
Okay.
It was just in my update.
With county program aid, the House, uh, is, is once increased by a hundred million. The Senate is down to only forty million. So there's no, uh, agreement there yet. Of course, AMC is pushing for the Houses, um, a hundred million, which that, that includes in an inflation, uh, rider, whereas inflation increases, you don't have to come back to ask for more increases, it just automatically happens. Um, well, then they've been, uh, talked about gun legislation. What seems, looks like is gonna be coming up is, uh, requiring background checks for private transfers. However, this would not include hunting rifles and shotguns.
If I can interject something, um, somebody that was on him, another county, said that it, currently, the state of Minnesota isn't enforcing the gun laws that are on the books. They're just adding to them. I thought that was interesting.
Okay. And I wrote, uh, oh, I got this right. Uh, I wrote down that seventy-nine out of eighty-seven sheriffs were against the background check. Oh, no, 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 against the storage. Yeah, yeah, okay, here's another one.
Yeah, they were okay with the background.
Yeah, they were okay with that. It's the gun storage bill that's, uh, that they were wanting to include. And that's the one that's, it's seventy-nine out of eighty-seven sheriffs were against that. And then another proposal would be the extreme, uh, risk that the judge can order a, a ban for that person to use the, uh, to have a gun in possession.
I've gotten some calls on that, the, the gun stuff, the legislation, and that the people especially don't like the, the storage part of it. If you're gonna have a, a gun to protect yourself, now all of a sudden you have to unload it and everything before you can actually protect yourself, so it's, I don't know, it's, it doesn't seem like real life circumstances there.
That's what's in their proposal, but.
And also with the current legislation, I could report that you're an unsafe person and a judge could enroll to take your gun.
Yeah. There's gotta be some, some safe, you know, checks in there to have some proof before this happens.
Uh, let's see. Other than that, there's, you know, just the things on possible taxes coming up. We discussed that the last time. So nothing new on that. Three hundred and fifty million to offer the broadband to, uh, for development there. But that's about all I have on that.
It appears, uh, the pilt, the potential increase to pilt is being whittled down rapidly to.
I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, they were talking about going up to three dollars. Uh, now I see the Senate bill is down to two and a quarter, so.
Yeah. I think, I think the House version had, like you say, from two dollars to three dollars. And then if you had a county that had ten to twenty-five percent was pilt, then you'd get an extra eight cents. And if it was over the twenty-five percent, you'd get an extra eighteen cents an acre. And now, like you say, now the, the sentence, we're whittling it down to two and a quarter.
Well, it did come up yesterday in the discussion that a lot of the spending is directed at the metro area and cutting out rural further.
I appreciate your email, too, for the, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Board of Aging there.
I, I did ask, um, what was the name of the lady? Is it Britta, the, the one that presented yesterday?
Britta, yeah.
And I, I asked her because most of the votes this year have just been down, straight down party lines. And so on all of the things that have been straight party lines, I questioned whether people actually believed if they were voting for or not and how that was accomplished. And she said, people are basically looking to be reelected and if you don't vote how the party tells you to, you're pretty much told that your support is gone. So that goes straight against the, the democratic process of what they're supposed to be doing.
Must be representing the people.
They're supposed to be representing the people. It's really frustrating.
That was the original intent of that two-year term.
Yep. And now the intent is to get reelected.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Ted?
Let's see, I had, uh, Northwest Minnesota Juvenile Center. I had a executive board meeting, uh, talked about the, uh, camera upgrades. Uh, they were looking at several different options out there. They had what they called the FBI standard, where you could read the, the license plates from hundreds of feet away type of a thing, and decided that we didn't need such sophisticated camera systems. Uh, so we're gonna upgrade some of the cameras and be on a three-year rotation. Um, got a grant for a double oven. I didn't write down the dollar amount. I believe it was twenty-some thousand dollars for a commercial type oven. Uh, talked about, uh, doing some, uh, appreciation for the kitchen supervisor. I think I mentioned before how she, they, we started, uh, doing in-house meals there at the center and how the, the staff and, uh, residents have gotten involved and it's been very good and how our, our supervisor has actually gotten grants to cover almost an entire hundred and thirty-three thousand of the budget. She's gotten about a hundred and thirty-one thousand in grants to cover all the food stuff and that, so.
Wow, that's great.
It was, yeah, so we don't wanna lose her, that's why I won't mention her name. Um, let's see, talked about the graduation rate at the satellite homes for the high school Let's see, we're, this is gonna be the fifty-year, uh, anniversary of the center and we're looking at, doing some kind of celebration, asking some of the former, uh, staff and, and board members to, to come back and, and celebrate that. Uh, let's see, talked about some, uh, training, sending some of the staff to Washington DC for, uh, some training. Uh, let's see, also, uh, I guess I won't get into that with the school, the public school district there, uh, the Midge School District, uh, and, and I guess that really takes care of that one. Uh, let's see, also had a North Country Community Health Board meeting that's being held in Bagley now. Uh, let's see. Marley, uh, talked about the caseloads, uh, for, uh, assistance there, WIC programs and other programs here with Hubbard County. Uh, the target was to have twenty-two, uh, help twenty-two people and we're already at twenty, uh, excuse me, the targeted was twenty and we're already at twenty-two, uh, caseloads so far for this year. And our funding is dependent on the number of people that you help, so the increased numbers, uh, will increase our budget then next year. Uh, let's see. There was a question on, uh, there's signage on Highway Two. A couple of us saw it on our way to Bagley, uh, billboard that talks about nativecare.com. Um, we, none of us knew what that was about. Uh, Marley had looked it up real quick. It has to do with, uh, um, medical marijuana on the reservation. So it was curiosity there with what that involves. Uh, let's see, uh, five-year grant of a hundred and seventy-three thousand, uh, to be split equally. That's a CDC infrastructure grant. Oh, and we also went over the, the budget, um, which is in good shape. We're within budget, uh, we're approximately twenty-five percent through the year and most of the, uh, areas we're at, uh, teens or low twenty percent usage already, so we're sitting there good with the budget. Uh, and I also have a draft of the annual summary report, if anybody wanted to look through that. I'd like to keep this copy, though, for myself. Then, uh, Dave and I had a Minnesota, University of Minnesota Extension Meeting last Thursday night. Uh, let's see, we had a, a group of four, four Hers there. They gave a presentation on, uh, first, uh, a couple, uh, gave a presentation on the wood duck nesting that they made, on the, the challenges of making a draft one and, and, uh, we heard a lot about, uh, what they did and how they tested them and stuff like that. Even how simple, was it strings or ropes that they even put across some of them?
Yeah.
To, to stop the birds and eagles and stuff like that from getting into the nests and They also talked about other predators if they were on land, you know, that, so they're trying to, they had one where the, the wood duck had been nesting on, on the beach and not having any success, but they had planted the nest there over her old nest. And then once she occupied it, then they slowly took it out into the water so that it would stay on the nest and continue to use it.
Was it wood duck or loon? Loon, I think.
Maybe, yeah, maybe loon, yeah.
They're a little more fickle.
Yeah. Uh, let's see. They were looking at Mary Jo with four H's is, uh, might not be able to, uh, work much at the fair, uh, has some challenges there, so they may be coming before us to ask for a small ask, but we've, David and I kind of talked about the process and how they should check other resources and they may have some other resources to draw on. It's, and like I say, it's not a big ask and we do have some time before the fair, um, so that may be coming before us. Talked a little bit about member recruitment. I don't remember a whole lot about that, though.
Yeah, I don't know as much of that either. I know it's up significantly over, like, three or four years ago.
Yeah, the number of.
Which is good, yeah, there's more four H kids.
Yeah, more four H kids then. Let's see if they have the numbers here. Talked about the different programming that's available, um, grazing, the grazing workshop, gardening from the ground up series, beekeeping and mite, uh, beekeeping and mite, uh, termite, mite treatment webinar and plant a basket, food preservation classes. Some more upcoming programs are garden tool swap, invasive aquatics, aquatic invasive species, foraging and forest, foraging in the forest class, dividing perennial, perennials workshop, soil testing on small vegetable gardens. And of course, there is other technical assistance available, um, for selling eggs on the farm, strawberry renovation, soil test analysis, raised bed gardening, apple tree pruning and insects. Here we go. They had in classroom Zoom, uh, direct education in Park Rapids. This would be Donna Anderson. She wasn't there, but we got the paperwork here. A hundred and eighty youth from ages of seven to twelve, fifteen teens and thirty-four adults were part of this, uh, Zoom classroom training. And let's see. They also talked a little bit about the Master Gardening Volunteer Program. And they got kinda the numbers here for the state of Minnesota. Two thousand nine hundred and fifty-three master gardeners, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-seven volunteer hours, and one hundred and forty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-three Minnesotans, Minnesotans reached. So that's what I had for extension. And then I had the Mississippi Headwaters Board. Let's see, we got some new members there. Like I say, you had, uh, some of the other former board members either didn't run for reelection or lost. Uh, so we welcomed, last month we had some of them on Zoom. But this month, of course, January they're at AMC one-on-one for new commissioners. So this month anyhow, we had them in person, which is nice. Talked about the Keep It Clean Program, which is something that, um, I was gonna talk to Sharon Netzel with the Hubbard County Coalition of Lake Associations. And this is a program that started on Lake of the Woods, where you have, especially during the ice fishing season, you have the number of people that go out there and ice fish now. They talked about, uh, number of people that live in these cities and yet the number of people that might be out on Lake of the Woods on a weekend, it far exceeds those populations. They talked about the garbage that is left on the lake. They also talked about the human waste that is being left out on the lake and areas that they're trying to, um, improve that. And now it's grown from Lake of the Woods. There's several lakes now that are getting involved in this. And this is something I know, like with here around the Park Rapids area, you know, in my district up in District Five, we haven't got a lot of lakes, not like you folks do down here around the Park Rapids area. But some of the, uh, they did a small video with Ron Share. It was only like three minutes or so. That's where I was hoping to have this presented at the Hubbard County Coalition of Lake Associations. Like I said, the video, it was, it was kinda, it was, it was kinda fun in one way, but then again, it was kinda disturbing to see the garbage and, and human waste and stuff. And also this is, I know it's been on to Red Lake Two now where they have dumpsters and stuff like that available. And I know on some of the smaller lakes that I have fished in the wintertime, some of the resorts have even had porta-potties out there. So I really appreciate those kinds of things. Had a, a letter of support. This is something that's been ongoing for a couple of years now with a land exchange with the Forest Service and a resort that's on Lake Windmigosh. Or no, Lake Cabotoga, uh, Cabotogoma. Let's see, talked about the Whiskey Creek Update. That's a, a little tributary that feeds into the Mississippi River. It was a former golf course. They were gonna originally do fourteen acres of mercury abatement because it was discovered that golf courses used to put fertilizer that included mercury on the grass because it made it grow greener. So now Good Sam is, uh, the Good Samaritan actually owns adjacent and is part of this, uh, Whiskey Creek Update. They wanna, and they're going to contribute, uh, to having the whole seventy-some acres, have the mercury abated from that, that entire thing, entire golf course, which I guess is being turned into a, uh, an area where the sediment and everything from the Baxter Brainerd, the, where Mills Fleet Farm is and, and all that business area, it all drains into this small area and then it all drains into the Mississippi River. So they're looking at eliminating some of that.
How do they get rid of the mercury?
Um, they're actually taking dirt away.
Mercury hangs on, like it's forever almost.
Yeah. And I can't remember the.
So they, are they disposing in a toxic waste place then and then hauling in new dirt?
It'll be taken to the, um, not the, not the landfill, but the transfer station in the area. Now I know in, in the past, um, when I was in Bell Tramie County, they actually, with some of the contaminated soil, they would burn it or bake it.
Oh, and that would clear out?
Clear it. But I'm not sure with mercury, you know, that's a good question. Cause I assume you don't wanna burn that, cause I would think that would maybe go into the air. That's a good question. Um, let's see, uh, discuss the website update. Like I said, we talked about that a little bit, um, Minnesota Traditions. Sixty-some, maybe seventy thousand Twitter followers now and almost forty thousand Facebook followers. Tasci County is talking about using some of that to promote their county. Let's see. And I guess the only other thing was, uh, the Mississippi, Mississippi Headwaters Board's annual, biannual conference will be at Breezy Point Resort this year instead of, uh, instead of in Walker. That's all I have.
Ted?
And, uh, on the Extension Committee stuff, uh, I've had some other interest appointments to the Extension Committee. So I got ahold of Jeff and asked if we could extend, extend it a little longer, see what else we have. Be nice to have two or three applicants to compare. And we've been without for a while, so a little longer probably isn't gonna hurt. Then I don't know, did you guys see the, the public comment period for one water shed, for crowing one water shed one plan?
I saw that, yeah.
I'm gonna reach out to, uh, the folks from Beltane and stuff and make sure they send something in.
Mr. Jerry, I got a question for the work session. So did you get ahold of Joel Giles and get that rescheduled?
Denise sent an email.
Yep.
And, and we're still waiting to hear back. Yep.
Oh, I'll, I have his number. I'll text him and see if I can get movement on that.
He had something unexpected come up.
Okay.
And sent his regrets and said he'd like to reschedule. We're just, we're just having contact, yes.
Uh, any meetings to note?
I have one, um, on the tenth, which would be a week from Wednesday. Mahabi is sponsoring a poverty simulator. So, um, it's from one to four at Northwoods Bank. And you can go and experience what it's like to be homeless.
To be homeless, huh?
It's what?
Action Park Rapids.
Oh, yes. Action Park Rapids is on the eleventh. Yep, you're right. And then, um, I got an invitation. I'm gonna be attending the First Nations Address in Menomone on Wednesday at ten o'clock. I don't know if the rest of you got an invitation.
I got an invite too.
I'm gonna go to that.
And that was on Wednesday, the tenth?
Wednes, nope. It's this Wednesday at ten o'clock.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, uh-huh.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, we are adjourned.